Pledge allegiance to the flag if you'd all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, please note that four of our members are present and we also have Counselor Wegner is joining us via Zoom. He will not be able to vote this evening, but he will definitely be able to partake in any questions or discussion with the council. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. We do have one addition coming out of land use and legislation. I'm sorry, two additions coming out of land use and legislation. One of them would be a snowplow license for Stephen W. Casapo. And the second one would be an on sale, a three-two on sale restaurant and bar, and a restaurant license for the Salty Jester LLC. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions from land use and legislation.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to our minutes of January seventeenth, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any questions or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to our special city council minutes of January thirtieth, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to a resolution approving transfers, payments of claims, and accounts payable. City of International Falls transfers going to the 101 General Fund, coming from the 812 Lodging Tax Fund is $271.81. Accounts payable claims, City of International Falls claims, $717,360.27. Airport commission claims of $135,717.97. Airport runway Phase Two claims of $17,163.75. For total accounts payable and claims of $870,241.99. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the payments and claims.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something forward that is not on the agenda? Oh, please come forward. Can you come up and state your name and?
I think I'm on the agenda. My name is Tammy Dobler. I.
Wanted you to take a seat, that way we can get so the folks can hear you on the mic.
Right in front of the mic.
Yeah, tip it up.
My name is Tammy Dobler. I work with the court services over at the courthouse. And so I just wanted to come in. And this is Kate Olin, she's probation agent here in Kuchichin County. And so we wanted to come and just talk about a town hall meeting that the court services, the Cape Coalition, the Dave Baker Foundation are putting on on Wednesday night and to kind of do an official, formal invite to everybody on the council and everybody attending and who's watching to come to the forum. I think that it's going to be very interesting. So what we're doing and the purpose behind it is to not scare people, but to create awareness and to educate what's going on in Kuchichin County around drug use. Specifically around youth drug use. But it's, we're focusing more on adult use because that's kind of more prevalent and we want to prevent it from trickling down into our youth. And so there's, I don't know, Kate is going to talk. We have a panel that's going to be up discussing. So there's going to be people from Rainy River Recovery, law enforcement. The judge is going to be emceeing it. Dave Baker will be here. He will be talking about his life experience losing his son. As many of you may know, he's originally from here. And so there's going to be an area table with stuff that's been confiscated by law enforcement, by probation. We want to create awareness of what parents can look for if they're suspecting that their child might be in something that they shouldn't, the dangers that go around it. And like I said, it's about education. It's not at all about scaring. But I think that what is going on in our county is worse than what people realize. And the only way we can stop that is through prevention and creating awareness and education is that first step in that. And the biggest part is bringing everybody together in the community to do that. Because one person can't do it, one group can't do it, it has to be everybody. So it needs to be the city council, it needs to be the county board, it needs to be the school boards, it needs to be the recovery field, it needs to be the prevention. We have a prevention coalition over at the school who works specifically with youth. It needs to be everybody. And that's the only way we can really create a healthy and safe Kuchichin County for our kids to grow up in. And so we wanted to officially invite everybody to come. I did bring some flyers for anybody that might be interested. It's just Wednesday night at 6:30 at Bacchus. Pass this around and answer any questions that you guys might have. So the agenda, the judge is going to do introduction. David Baker is going to speak. Cape is going to speak. Law enforcement is going to do a little presentation. Kate is going to do a presentation on what she sees as a juvenile probation officer here in Kuchichin County in International Falls. Then we're going to open it up to a question and answer where people can just, you know, ask questions about whatever they're curious about, you know. I know law enforcement has been gathering stats on, for the last several years on confiscation, what they're seeing. They've been able to partner with the Paul Bunyan Task Force, so that gives us more resources up here with the task force has been able to bring it in as well as locally. And I think you might find it very interesting and educational.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do want to add that this has started because we were seeing juveniles, especially around the 14 and 15-year-old age, trying methamphetamines and having an issue with that. So this is really to help parents understand why my kid is acting like that or why do I have weird things in my home? What's going on? And give them the education how to help them. But we have, we're starting to see a very big issue with these juveniles and we really want to prevent it before it starts. So I really encourage anybody to go to this.
Well, I want to say thank you for coming and explaining it. I, to be completely honest, I did have a conversation over a month ago about this town hall meeting and I was asked to come. And, you know, I had it in our packet last, last city council meeting so that we could have the information there. We had a quick discussion about it, just letting everyone know that it was available. But to be able to hear and especially listening to your passion as you're speaking about it, it is very obvious that there is more than what we immediately see. And I think that, I think you've sold me on making a point at 6:30 on Wednesday to have a place to be. So does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just that I think it's important that I was planning on going just because I still got a little bit of the old job in me. And now there's stuff that I'm involved in now with the mental health work I do with the veterans and stuff like that. And even the homeless and the food child, this is all stuff that comes together, you know. It's all one big problem, one leads to the other. So I think it's important and just by the fact that we're in the Paul Bunyan Task Force already explains, you might read about this stuff happening in Bemidji or Red Lake or Calf Lake. Well, obviously it's either here or it's coming here. And I realize it is and I think this is very important to me. People aware and if we can stop beforehand, you know, the best, you know.
I was going to say, I saw we have law enforcement officers here and I'm sure they can tell you much more about what they see and what they experience. And yeah. And I think, I would hope you would agree that it takes all of us.
It's all, because and just had for the people, and my job, if you realize, but I used to, I'm retired from working in the jail and I was a jail administrator. So I really know how it's all conducted and how much is going on. It is very important that we get a handle on it and people know what's going on.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to bring something forward that's not on the agenda? Oh, and also thank you for bringing something forward that wasn't a negative, it's a positive for our community, so thank you.
Right out of my, on my Hitler.
Yeah. All right, so then we'll go to old business. We have some information that the city attorney was looking for. I don't think we're ready to move on it. Do you just have an update for us?
Yes, and I don't know if you'll end up wanting to move or not. But so I spoke with Nora to kind of explain what sort of thing the city may be looking for and the cost on that sort of thing. And a couple of issues she brought up to me is one. I-Docs, to be able to search by a city name only goes back to the mid 1970s. And unfortunately, what I found going through some of the abstracts is that may be a substantial part of what is owned by the city. And then the second thing that she brought up is, you know, we have these particular pieces that are maybe at issue now. And if we were to order a whole title opinion, it's not guaranteed that those would go first. So I think it may be something worth looking at in the future. But I know we already have particular pieces that want to be looked at, that I can just do that. I did ask her costs for like right of way. Ted approached me for right of way and easements. Those would range from 150 to 250 if we need it. And then for a title opinion on a parcel, that would be 250 if we need it. So kind of what I talked with Nora and we, she thought it was an okay idea to bring forward is the ones we know that are issues, I'll take a look at first. So primarily I'm looking at the airport.
Recording in progress.
Is what I would be looking at. And then Ted has a couple of right of ways. So I would preliminarily go through them. And then if I thought it was something that maybe needed a title opinion or more digging, then I would just bring them forward. But it sounds like if I do a full, if we request a full title opinion, those problem ones, because they're not indexed in I-Docs where you can just search by the city, might be put off till last, which is like the opposite of, I think, what you were looking for.
The intention was?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, and I wouldn't think that we have a need for a motion to move forward for the ones that the councils already asked to move forward on, so.
No.
Okay, so then at this time I will just leave that on the table and we'll bring it back in the future if necessary. The next item we have under old business would be the second and final reading of contract ordinance setting rates collection collected as revenue supporting utility operations. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the second and final reading of that contract ordinance.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to the consent agenda. We have the Ameritas Dental Insurance Renewal Collection. Only item we have under consent agenda, chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So I'll make.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. I believe we have an immediate second by Counselor Holden. Since there's no discussion, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. We'll go to the first item that we have under new business, which ends up being three different discussions. If you'd like to please come up with International Falls Bass Championship.
Hello, I am Tara Arts and I am here on behalf of the IFBC. And we are looking for approval and support from the city to host the 19th Annual Bass Championship here at Smokey Bear Park. It is slated to be held the last weekend of August, which is the weekend that it is normally held. So we would start set up in the park early that week. And then events would start on Thursday, August 24th and run through Saturday night, August 26th. The championship itself, would the fishing contest would take place on Friday and Saturday. However, on Thursday, we would start with a boat parade. We have family fun zones. This would include many food vendors, craft vendors. I believe last year we had approximately a dozen food vendors and up to 20 craft vendors that were a part of the event. And so we are just looking for the, again, approval and partnership with the city to host this once again this year along with needing an application for the on sale liquor. We would do that on Friday and Saturday evenings, or Thursday evening we would start. But Friday and Saturday, we would also have live music in the park. And then we are also looking for the permit to sell raffle again this year.
All right, well, you had me at food vendors.
Great.
All right, so the first item that we have on our agenda would be to consider a partnership with the International Falls Bass Championship for the August 24th through the 26th. Is that included with a road closure?
It would need a road closure, yes.
And then that is, that's on me, that's one of the things that I have to send in, correct?
Send you.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But if you get them all put together same time, you can do the Fourth of July Bass Tournament. That's how I always do them. That's what I figured, but at least.
And we figure out anything on Main Street that needs to be shut down, even the elk's corn feed. I think we've had to do that one too, so.
And we might as well add that to let me know when you're sending it in.
Okay. So the first item we have is the partnership and I can handle that, that piece for the road closure. So the chair would entertain a motion to partner with the International Falls Bass Championship for August 24th through 26th for the event.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to the one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for the annual International Falls Bass Championship to be held August 24th through 26th, 2023 at Smokey Bear Park located at 603rd Street, International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that license. We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. And finally, consider the resolution adopting or approving the International Falls Bass Championship application to, for an exempt permit to sell raffle tickets for the drawing to be held Saturday, August 26th, 2023 at Smokey Bear Park. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that license or that raffle. We have a motion by Counselor Holden.
I'll second it if I win.
Okay, so I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it.
It's only if he wins.
Only if he wins. Well, I didn't put in conditions of only seconding the beer garden.
Okay, so we have a second over.
I just didn't want to be, I just didn't want to be the one to move at some people, I'm no kidding, huh?
So we have a motion by Counselor Holden. Are you willing to second it without winning? Excellent. We have a second by Counselor Buller. No conditions on the beer garden, excellent. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the raffle. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Yes.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Is there anything else we can help you with this evening?
That's everything. I will say though, last year was my first year even being here for the Bass Tournament and being a part of it. And kudos to the city, the work crew, Mike and his crew. I couldn't have done what my part was with the tournament without them. And I just wanted to throw that out, that they were a large help, big help for us in, in everything that we put on.
It's been that way every year. I was, I was in charge of setup for seven years, so yeah, they helped every year.
Every year.
So can I ask if this last year was your first year being involved? How did you get involved and what, I'm so curious.
So my husband, Dan, and I, I grew up in Little Fork. We moved to Texas and we were in Texas for 20 years and have retired and are moving back to International Falls. So last year was our first year back and I got a phone call. I offered help, they called me.
Oh, you're caught forever.
Would you like to come and, would you like to come and help us for a few hours setting up tables? I said, sure, why not? And that four hours turned into four days and here I am.
You missed the next meeting, didn't you? And here you sit.
Well, we appreciate you coming to our community and love, love that you're helping out with such a great event, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will go to some less exciting stuff. Approve Amendment One for the State of Minnesota contract DPS SFM hazmat for hazardous materials contract number 220249 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the amendment. Oh, okay, we have a motion by Counselor Kaler.
We got to get going here.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Is this the, this is the contract that finalized the temporary one that we did last month, chief?
It's an amendment to that contract.
Right.
Non-substantive changes, just leaving these in the end and one of the radicals there for retention and for hollow contracts okay though.
Okay.
Does not affect the length of the term or any financial side of the contract.
Okay. So it's just an amendment to what we've already, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, approve the St. Louis County Rural Ambulance Assistance Contract as amended. City Administrator, you want to just give us a brief background on this one?
Actually, Adam, if he could, he's got his memo in there. We've been in a service contract with them for a number of years.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as Betty stated, we have been in this for a very long time. St. Louis County's original resolution was in 1984. For, so whenever we run an ambulance into St. Louis County, they compensate us for that service, even though it's in our PSA. So they, they pay us a $16 base rate and 22 cents per mile. And those are not loaded miles, those are every mile from the station back to the station. They voted now this year, after just about 40 years now, to upgrade that and do the base rate to $23 base rate and leave the mileage the same. I attached to my proposal, the county board minutes from St. Louis, I'm sorry, committee of the whole minutes from St. Louis County that talked about this. And there was quite a bit of discussion on whether the mileage should increase or not. They elected not to increase this at this time. They're in the same position as we are with taxing district talks and everything else, just legislation coming down the pipe for ambulance. So this is kind of a temporary fix on their part. They did say that an increase was due, but they wanted to kind of see what rolled out of legislation coming this year. I would highly recommend that we sign this. I mean, it's something we've done for a long, long time and it's just agreeing to take a higher base rate, so.
Just a kind of a side note, outside of this meeting, do you have the information on the legislation at the state about ambulance and any additional funding that they would be giving to rural communities?
Yes, I've seen some of the bills that have come out, so I just got an email today. Some of the, most of them right now are revolving around training dollars. They're still kind of cranking them out, seeing what comes out, I can.
Please forward those on, I'm very, I'm very curious. I, I did speak with Commissioner McDonald from St. Louis County very briefly. But with that being said, he is very supportive of everything we're trying to do up here right now, so.
Yeah, and again, I think they're in the same place we are and the same position along with the rest of the state. So one of the big pushers at the state side is Representative Hewitt, who is out of yeah, somewhere metro area, I apologize.
He's from Minnesota.
He's from Minnesota metro area and he's a big pusher on the EMS legislation. And of course, the Minnesota Ambulance Association is, is creating a lot of that legislative action to move forward, so.
Okay. Excellent. So at this time, chair would entertain a motion to approve that assistance contract.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Discussion, questions, concerns?
Just to clarify, they don't have to pay us anything, right? If they're in our.
They don't have to, this is a kind of a voluntary thing on their part.
I mean, I read it Friday, so I just wondered if I remembered.
No, that's absolutely correct, Counselor. They do not have to pay us anything.
Which is, I'll leave it at that.
That's really, that's really diplomatic because I want to say something to it, I'm just going to let it go too. All right, but I do greatly appreciate St. Louis County thinking that there is additional need. And because of that need, there's additional cost, which they don't have to give.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald has been at just about every one of Ramness meetings by Zoom and taking part in it. So yeah, he's great with it, awesome.
Yeah, and this just doesn't affect International Falls. This, this does affect a lot of ambulance services in St. Louis County. So for example, cooker war, for example, once they go outside of their municipal city limits is when this kicks in for them. So this is taking care of a lot of ambulance services regionally within St. Louis County and the ones that border St. Louis County.
Excellent. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have considered the enterprise leasing program for city vehicles. This is a conversation we had at the committee of the whole. We've had additional conversation. Last we had a conversation with the council, we had asked the city administrator and the city attorney to look and get a contract before us, and I believe that's what we have today. So I'll hand this off to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We did reach out, we did get a, what they've put in front of us is a basically a credit application because as Mr. Wong indicated, that they, they don't normally break them up until we've passed like the credit app. So I went and I pulled the documentation that they had previously sent us with Little Falls. And these are the documents that we would have in front of us. I think Chelsea was then tasked to, to review them and understand what Mr. Nyström, I'm sorry, was presenting to us. So I mean, is there anything, Chelsea, that you can update us on that you had researched?
No, there was one other, I think, attachment that just changed the applicable state that applies to Minnesota. And it was in the Little Falls packet that Mike sent me. So it's basically an addendum to the agreement that says Minnesota law shall apply. And you don't have to do that, but if you don't, I can't legally advise you.
So the crux of the issue that we've had is we're not able to get vehicles. Everything is backlog, but this would be an opportunity for the city to lease vehicles so that our public works, our police department and, and in some capacity, the fighter department would be able to access these vehicles. We've, we've looked at it and I think that it's the conclusion of the city council that this is something that we. of the city council that this is something that we, we may not necessarily like to do right now, but it's really our only option to be able to get vehicles so that we can continue servicing our community. At this time, I guess we're really at the point where we have to move forward to go with the leasing program or determine that we're just going to wait for vehicles that we've already been waiting for, for years. So is the recommendation right now to move forward with this contract? Yeah, you guys, you guys were working really hard over there. Do you see that?
Okay, first I lied. They have the amendment in here.
Okay.
So from a legal standpoint, I don't see any red flags with doing this.
Okay.
Whether you should, I don't know. It's up to you.
Yeah, understood. So please.
Mayor, if I may, on behalf of the department heads that we've been working with, I would, I would suggest we move forward with this. It's not an agreement that we have to do long-term. There's no time commitments or restraints that we have to get into this. We have researched and the time of out dates to get vehicles is two and three years. So this would, I think some of the timeframes are still out there a little ways, but we would be able to get them sooner than later. And I think the value that this does provide could save us some dollars. If we see in the future that it won't, we can always change them, our model. But on behalf of the department heads, I would, I would suggest and agree with moving forward with this agreement with leasing vehicles.
Please. I think also that the information that we've had from the research you've done, the research that Ted's done, the research that you guys have all done, the cities that are doing it are saving some money.
You're right.
So I think, you know, if we can save some money, that's the way to move. Sometimes it costs money to save money, but they're going to buy our own vehicles. So I mean, we, it's a win-win, I think.
Yep. Well, at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to move forward with the enterprise leasing program.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any, any discussion?
I just think, I don't think this is the first time the city's gotten into the leasing of vehicle business. I believe when I was on the council before, we leased like heavy equipment from, for graders and such.
It's been done here just recently too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of the cost and everything and.
I guess the only, only concern that I have with it, and it's a very weak concern because we are basically leasing to own at any time. We can sell the vehicles. I mean, that's kind of the key to the whole thing is they tell us when the value of the vehicle is at its peak to be able to sell to get a new vehicle. But I think that that's my immediate concern in this is we sell our vehicles, we then have all these new vehicles and that we don't trade them in the right timeframe. And we continue doing the same type of thing that we've been doing. But again, then we're still doing the same thing we've been doing. So it's really, doesn't change anything. It's just a concern that we're getting rid of all of the vehicles that we do have, not all of them, but staggering them over time to go into the program.
And then you, one thing to think too down that we don't have to worry about selling them, putting them out for bids.
Right.
So taking care of them, like you said, basically that's what we're doing. And again, we pay them out, we trade them or pay them after four years, let's say.
Yeah.
So I think it will, I think it's going to work out in the long run, hopefully.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, consider a resolution application for an exempt permit for Coochin County food access to conduct a raffle with a drawing to be held at the Library Bistro on February 25th, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that raffle.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion?
I'll just, I will abstain from voting out because I'm on the board of the Coochin County Food Access.
Okay. And I will not abstain from the vote, even though I own the restaurant, that it'll be there because I am not going to be getting any financial compensation from the raffle.
Correct, yes.
So we have a motion and a second to move forward on the raffle. Call the question.
Aye. Aye.
An abstention.
Abstain.
And I will vote yes, motion carries three for the motion and one abstention. Next, we have a resolution for application for a one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for the Rotary Club for the annual men's hockey tournament, March 17th through the 19th, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion for that resolution.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four for the motion, one exempt, or zero against the motion, sorry. Next, we have a resolution for a permit for the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation Ash Trail, or Ash River Trail to conduct a raffle to be held at the Bacchus Community Center, April 1, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four for the motion, zero against. Next, accept a letter of resignation from part-time Officer Carter Lagrin, Logrin, please.
Lagergrin.
Lagergrin. Effective February 12th, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that letter of resignation.
Move this up a bit.
We have a motion to accept from Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? In the event that we don't accept the resignation, does he just have to stay working?
I hope so, yeah. He just stays here.
All right then. I'm voting against this then. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna let him do what he wants. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye. Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four for the motion, zero against the motion. Next, we go to a resolution approving the 2023 wages and benefits for non-union employees. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? I just would say that I was a little bit leery to do this before we got the information from Flattery and Hood last week. So I'm, I feel a lot better knowing that we are right in pace with where we need to be. And the raises that we are moving forward make sense to the long-term of the game plan that we had with the compensation subsidy. So we have a motion and a second. I will call the question.
Aye. Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, this has been kind of a weird one, and I reached out to the city attorney this morning just to make sure that we can, she can explain what is going on with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the appointments. The appointment that we had, I had made in January was for Joe Kraus to sit on that board. And I am keeping that appointment of Joe Kraus to sit on that board. However, some information has come up and Barb Albert, who has been on that board, is a resident of the HRA apartment there. And there is some, not legislation, I don't even know, but there's, I have to have somebody on the, that lives in the building to also be on that board. So I just want to get some more information to the council regarding that from the city attorney.
Okay. So currently, the HRA, as set out in Minnesota statute, can have five to seven members. There are currently six. Apparently, maybe there's seven if Joe was already appointed. Either way, with this person up for reappointment, in 2000 or 2002, it was legislated that one of the members must be directly assisted by the public housing agency. So if we already have one of those, you can appoint basically whomever. If we don't, not the end of the world, you just have to provide not less than 30 days' notice of your intent to fill that vacant seat. And providing notice means you basically mail a letter to everyone that receives public housing assistance, or assistance from the public housing agency. If there's no interest, I mean, you can't make someone do it. So then you can appoint whomever you decide to put there. Other little caveat is there are very old bylaws for the HRA. So currently, the bylaws don't reflect any of these updates. Again, not the end of the world because statute will override it, but just something to keep in the back of your brain.
So, so it is my intention to reappoint Barb Albert to a five-year term to that, but I also am going to keep Joe Kraus, which we had appointed on that board. The bylaws that the city, city attorney had mentioned are from 1966. So I think that it might be time to ask the International Falls HRA to update their bylaws since they are a division of the city of International Falls. So I will have, I'll bring that so we can have some more discussion about that at the Committee of the Whole next week so we can have any more in-depth conversation we want about that. However, the business that's before us right now would be to confirm the reappointment of Barb Albert to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. So at this time, I would ask for confirmation of that appointment.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler. Any discussion?
Just that, little one, just legislation that's also becoming best practices in the, I'm trying to think, the charitable sector, like the food access, not to have members of boards that are people receiving the help. I mean, that's kind of a best practicing that's come into full kind of.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to the two items that we had added to this meeting. The first one would be the new license for snowplow for Stephen W. Cassibow. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that license.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries four zero. And then the second one would be the Salty Jester LLC, which is a wine on sale, a 32 on sale restaurant and bar and a restaurant license. When they presented this morning, the land use and legislation moved it to this, and then the building official had just brought up that there was a couple of concerns that he had. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve that license contingent with the approval of the building official.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler. Would you like to talk to the council and tell what you're doing over there? Or please, please come on up?
I was one here this morning.
This one, we have more people.
We are opening a performance lounge that is going to specifically cater to people that want to go see entertainment with live entertainment more than just once in a while. And of course, we all know that getting people in the seats is a lot easier if there's liquor offered for sale. So.
Or beer and wine, which you're asking for.
Yes. So, so you know, for people to be able to have a glass of wine or whatever with the events that we offer. We are going to only be open from 6:00 to 11:00. So it's not a bar. We, you know, I don't have any interest in doing that. Busy enough already as it is. But yeah, so we are going to have things of live arts and entertainment and live music. And so we know that requesting a liquor license goes with that as well, so.
Or a beer and wine license, which you're requesting.
Beer as wine license, that's right. I forgot. They're totally different. Yes. So. And then, yeah, Kelly said earlier that contingent on a few things. I'll get together with him the next week or whenever he can fit us in. And then hopefully we'll be good to go. All the i's dotted and t's crossed.
Excellent. I'm ridiculously excited.
I'm really, now I'm entering the nervous stage. I was really excited for like the last three months and now that we're getting closer. But I'm really excited. As someone who doesn't drink anymore, it's really hard to go out and find something to just visually keep you entertained without feeling like you have to stare at a bunch of drunk people at the bar. So, so I really, it's something I wanted to do ever since we had the building out in Rainier. And then we were fortunate enough, you know, COVID hit and we were fortunate enough to get rid of that. And so I'm really excited. We have a lot of talent locally that is just waiting to perform. And this, I think, being right on Main Street in the building we're in, it'll be a really great addition to revitalizing some of those downtown businesses and buildings. So hope to see you all there.
Can you reiterate the, in committee, you talked about what the different nights would be? Can you, can you share that with the whole group?
So we are, Wednesday nights are going to be dance lessons. So we also, we will have, Denise Kulig is going to teach that. So that's going to be ballroom, belly dancing, ballroom, burlesque, ballet. There's all sorts of them.
Do they all start with B?
Ironically, yes. And so, so then Thursdays, we're going to just simply like on a big pull-down projector, have classic movies, so black and white movies, old movies. And then Friday nights will be live arts, so open mic, poetry, prose, different things of that nature. And then Saturdays are going to be live music. So I really wanted to recreate like the feel of the old spot lounge, but on Main Street. So, yeah.
So Friday, you'll be able to stand on those stairs and, and speak to your constituents. That's what you'll call it on Fridays and Fridays nights.
Yeah. I just have, okay, because I've been running through my head 321 Third Street. Where's this going to be? Which building?
It is the Dressey Moose Building, Denise's building. Yeah, so.
Well, no wonder I'm confused. That's only like three doors from the corner.
I don't venture very far apparently. 344 Third Street was my first address, then 333, and now 321. So, yeah.
So just out of curiosity, I've been on the council long enough that when Denise and, no, I just, Eric had, first came to the council and they said that they had big plans for the building, but we're not going to tell anybody about what we're doing right now. Was this the game plan way back then?
How, how back is way back?
Ten, eight years?
Oh, no, no, that wasn't it. I'm not sure what they had in mind, but yeah.
Maybe they didn't know that you were going to come around.
They didn't. In fact, I didn't even know until Denise said, hey, I have an opportunity to move out to Rainier. And I know you've always wanted to do this since you had the building out in Rainier. So, you know, we've got the space and we'll, we'd rather rent to you first before just something else going in here. So of course, I had to say yes. So, yeah, I'm excited.
The other thing, which has nothing to do with your license, I have to say that your Facebook or your social media marketing that you've done is really good. Not, not putting a ton of information, but getting people to talk without knowing what they were even talking about.
I wish.
This is going to be great. I don't even know what it is, but I want to be there.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm right on that verge of, I'm not young anymore, but I'm not old for technology. And so it's like, I'm learning all that you have to keep up or you're, you know, it's, it's a full-time job pretty much. So, thank you very much.
So we have a motion and a second to move forward. All right, so we have a motion and a second to move forward with the contingency of working with Kelly. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Small boo, yes. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't have anything else on the agenda, is, we'll go to the reports of the boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
I have nothing further, Mayor.
City Attorney?
I do have a couple things. So the report should be in your packet that has all the updates on civil files, and I will highlight the happy ones first, and then we'll kind of talk about the not-so-great ones. The hazardous home located at 629th Street, we filed the order with the court, it has to sit there for five business days, so as of tomorrow, we can file the motion, so that should be resolving this month or early next month. And then the quiet title action on the city garage, we do now have a motion hearing date, that's March 6, 2023. And then the hazardous home located at 1021 Ninth Street, we do have the signed agreement back from Johanna Riley. David Larson's went out in the mail last week, and we expect to have that back very soon. So all of those are kind of resolved or very close. There are two that we ran into a hiccup, 1307 Seventh Avenue and 909 Seventh Street. You have all actually already signed the order that we need to serve, and then if they don't comply, then we're kind of at the motion phase. Unfortunately, when I did an ONE on it, which basically means I double-checked the title to make sure no liens or judgments have come up, both of those properties went back for tax forfeiture in November. So the orders you did don't work anymore. I can work with the state, whomever I can try contact, and see if we can reach some sort of agreement, or we would have to start the order process over, and I need to basically research and identify who that defendant is to have them served.
So if both, if they went back on to, wouldn't that be the county? That would have to be the?
Most likely, yes. The way it's currently on the parcel, parcel info, it actually has the state IRS, Department of Revenue, which is weird, because the actual tax forfeiture certificate says it goes back to the county in which the taxes were due. So yes, I think you're correct, but I don't want to say for sure, because I don't know.
So then my, my follow-up question would be on this, is if we, we already had a, a order to have them tore down and put them on the tax rolls, or on the taxpayer, correct? Or were we just tearing them down at that time?
So you had an order that we had to serve on the defendants stating if they didn't respond within a certain period of time, we were going to tear them down. Two things didn't happen on both of those, there was at least one person that remained unserved, and if we don't personally serve them or publish, service isn't complete. The second thing is typically, when you get these orders signed, you can file what's called a notice of lis pendens, which basically puts everyone on notice that this property has some sort of action involving it against it, and you would get some sort of service that these were going up for tax forfeiture. So the notice of lis pendens was not filed, so we don't actually have a recorded claim anywhere. And then the second part is because we didn't complete service on these defendants, and now they're no longer owners of the property, we can't use them.
So the, the question that's before us is what we want to do with these two properties? Do we want to start the process again and then serve the state or the county, whoever is legally obligated to those properties, or do we want to not move forward? Is that the question that you're having for us?
It's kind of, not really. It's whether you want me to, so similar with the property located at 1021 Ninth Street, we were able to reach an agreement on that one to have the property torn down. So I can either reach out to whomever I need to for these two properties, see if we can get that agreement made, or if you don't want to spend time seeing if that works, and you just want to go ahead, let's get the order done, I can do that, too.
I'd say agreement.
I would, I would lean towards agreement as well.
Okay, I will try to get an agreement.
Especially if it is the county.
Yeah, they're going to say yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so. I think that was it. Yep.
All right. Any questions or concerns for the city attorney? All right, we'll go to department heads. Chief? Chief?
Yes, sir.
And we don't have Public Works, so we'll, real quick update, city administrator, we have those two positions that have gotten down to the interview process, can you just tell us where we're at with the deputy city administrator and our maintenance one worker?
Both of them are, they have, interviews are scheduled the fall, this week. So we'll be interviewing, I believe the deputy is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I'm not certain on the exact days for the maintenance worker one, because I'm not on that panel, but I know they are doing interviews this week as well.
Okay, so would we be looking at most likely having those hires on our next council agenda?
On the 21st, yes.
Okay.
Yep, if all goes well.
Okay, excellent. All right, in your packet, you have the Public Works, actually, it was a handout this evening, the Public Works annual report.
That's an update, Mayor, to the one that was in the packet. He had done some additions and revisions to it.
All right. And the city attorney's monthly report, which she ended up walking us through, reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Does anybody have anything to bring forward?
Not pertaining to the city per se, but the, I mentioned earlier, I'm on the, it's called the Kuching County Warriors Initiative for suicide prevention and awareness for vets and others. Well, part of that is connectedness, get people together, and as you know, Harley, they have Coffee with the Vets the second Wednesday every month at the VFW, but this month, they're having it at Bacchus. We have, or the committee that, of the group I'm on, we make and call it the Kuching Vets Lodge at Bacchus, it's going to be a place where the vets can go hang out, whatever, you know, it's not a, that's a drop-in center, kind of loosely.
Yep, that's what I was just going to ask.
Yeah, it's a drop-in center, just where, and then the, and that, I haven't seen it yet, I've just heard from reports at the board meetings that it's going to be a nice place, and they want a place not by the VFW because of obvious reasons with the alcohol and stuff, but in, in short, that's going to be held this Wednesday at, in Bacchus from 2:08 with Coffee with the Vets. I just wanted to mention that for anybody that be watching or listening, and Laurel could put it in the paper maybe if it's in time, but, and I think it's going to be really good, and the group of people from the steering committee are really excited and doing a great job, and I don't go to Coffee with the Vets because I'm not a vet, so we're, you know, we're in that process, but to go see the work they've done, and that I'm looking forward to it, and I think it's going to be a nice addition.
Excellent. Any other council committees, boards, and commissions? All right, I have two things. The first was last week, I ended up going down to the state capitol, and I ended up meeting with 10 senators and representatives regarding both the Cary Park project, also regarding the ambulance relief. I've spoke, those were the two main things that I spoke with, with representatives about, and I really got beat up by one senator because his first question was, are you really the mayor of International Falls? And I said, yes, I am. And his follow-up was, what year did you win the state hockey tournament? And I said, 1995, and he goes, okay, no, that was the last time you won it, but what decade did you guys win it? And I said, well, that's a little bit before my time, because I'm not much of a hockey fan, but as it turns out, it was 1964, 1965, and 1966. He showed me all of that, and we do have a lot of support for our project for a couple of reasons, one being International Falls has never asked for bonding, and being a, a city of 6,000 people in rural Minnesota to not ever have asked for bonding in any recent memory, if we have, nobody here remembers when it's happened. We have a lot of support, I think we are going to struggle a little bit in the House of Representatives, however, across the board, not talking about Cary Park, there is a lot of concern even for, from the representatives and senators of the metro about ambulance taxing, ambulance service and being able to, be able to move things forward. So those were the two things I hit on pretty hard. We also have a League of Minnesota Cities has a Day on the Hill, I believe that's on the 9th of March. I highly recommend some members of the council to go to that. So that's the first thing I'd like to bring forward. The second thing is I'd like to call a committee of the whole meeting specifically for a one-item agenda, which would be the city's position on the rec, the rec commission with the, with the school district. Today at Land Use and Legislation, the superintendent came and spoke, Mr. Grover basically outlined that they are ready to move forward in any capacity, however, they need to understand what the city is, where the city is, and then secondly, what the timeline is, because we know that Bill Mason is going to be retiring, that's kind of what's triggered the entire conversation, so we just need to have a frank discussion so that we can get to the school district, so we can start drafting up some dissolution paperwork, or, you know, figure out how to do it the way we've done it, only better. So that's, that's really the conversation piece that we need to have. At that meeting, the city administrator had said that the city attorney has gotten some information to be able to draft some paperwork one way or another on whatever the city wants to do moving forward, but I think we need to have a frank discussion on how we move forward with that. So the question would be, what, what time would work for the council, given the 72-hour notice that we would have to have to, to post for that meeting? I'm available pretty much any day after 4 o'clock. Mondays, coincidentally, really suck for me, so any day but Monday would be fantastic.
So are you talking about doing it real soon, is that what?
Well, I think we need, it, it doesn't have to be immediate. I think the, the conversation is just what makes sense for everyone that's at this board, and then give, making sure that the city administrator has enough time to get a hold of any key players in the city, Public Works, whatever, whatever we're going to need to figure out our end of, of moving forward. So I guess I would lean towards the city administrator, kind of give a timeline that makes sense for us to pick, for you to be able to get a hold of Ted and Mike and anyone else that we would need to make some decisions about our properties.
Well, I think within the next couple weeks, you know, I think is probably appropriate.
Okay. Do you, do we want to just have a quick touch on the conversation, maybe on Monday's committee of the whole, and then have another meeting later in the week or the following week?
Let's set, I'm sorry.
Please, please do.
Let's set a meeting and, on a date here, and I'm, that works, and, and next, next week, some, one day?
Yeah.
I'm available, I'm gone now till, I want to say Wednesday of next week, I'm hunting down in Arkansas, so.
Coincidentally, I didn't think you were going to be here today.
I leave Wednesday.
I just thought about that.
I'll be gone shooting snow geese.
Snow, yeah. Thought maybe you were going after some razorbacks.
No, no, but that'd be fun.
Yeah?
But, yeah, I won't be back probably till, I want to say Wednesday of next week.
Okay, so why don't?
Would next Thursday?
I was just going to say maybe next Thursday.
Thursday would be around.
The 16th, February 16th?
Yeah.
4 o'clock work?
Yeah.
Tim, does that work for you?
Yep, Mike can be there.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll have a recreation meeting on the 16th at 4 o'clock. And I, I don't have anything else, so if there's nothing else, we'll go to audience, please.
Yeah.
Please.
So with regard to item 5 on the agenda tonight, the St. Louis County and the Vaxing District.
Yeah.
I literally just got an email from St. Louis County, they had an error in the original contract they sent out. So on the original contract, item number 10, the verbiage used was, apologize, I gotta read off my phone here, pickups must be outside a primary service area, the correct wording should be outside of the corporate limits of the municipality.
Okay.
So they sent a revised contract, so I'm just simply asking that, I know you guys haven't viewed the revised contract, but I just sent it to Betty and to Mayor, if we can have the revised one signed, so we don't need to do an addendum here, next council meeting.
Okay. So, yeah, we, we definitely can do that, but I think we should probably wait until Paul gets back. Actually, we, we don't. He's, he's here, we're, he's knowledgeable about it. The chair would entertain a motion to, to accept that, that new contract with the new writing.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Still have a quorum. This is how you get business done.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries three for the motion, zero against the motion. All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to audience, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward. I'd like to thank Deputy Chief Lassard for being here tonight. It's been a while since I saw you, so it's really nice to have you in, in here tonight. Two meetings in one day.
Yeah.
All right, so at this time, with no other information, your correspondence that we have is the International Falls Kuchen County Airport Commission meeting minutes, International Falls Recreation Commission meeting minutes, the county draft board minutes for January 24th, and the Northeast Minnesota Office of Job Training, Arrowhead Economic Development, or Economic Opportunity Press Release. Our next regular city council meeting is going to be on Tuesday, February 21st, at 5:30 due to Presidents' Day. This meeting is adjourned.